Words upfront, so um so welcome everyone to the special session on advancing open science. So I'm glad to see you all here and welcoming you on the behalf of the Zephyr Foundation. You must, most of you might know this is the session, this is the session is being organized by the Open Science Committee of the Zephyr Foundation. That involves me, I'm the chair of the of the committee. And then Jason Hawkins, Gerard Hoek and Shesong Zhou are the the other committee members. And so the our intention for today is that we have about a two hour program here. Where we would like to discuss various aspects of open science and we are going to dedicate the first the the first hour to a few presentations that touch on the lot of foundations of open science in terms of network and and data standards and open source software tools. And both in 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 development and practice. And then in the second hour, we're going to have a panel discussion where we will have an open where we can have an open discussion about open science about the sharing of data codes and and research products. And so in that second hour, everybody who is here is very welcome to to contribute to that discussion and I'm hoping that we'll have a lively lively conversation. So Jason will moderate the first hour here with the presentations. So the floor is yours, Jason.
Great, so I don't know that I have too much more to say. Thanks, Andre. I think we'll we'll keep moderation fairly brief here so that we have lots of time for for discussion, we can maybe depending on the time have a one or two questions after each presentation, but then we'll have kind of a a broader discussion at the end. I think we have some really great presenters today, current and asked Zephyr board members, which is nice to see. And maybe some some future Zephyr board members if we can recruit them. So we'll we'll start with Lisa Zorn, who's going to talk a little bit about some work in collaboration actually with both Andre and Shesong on network standards.
Awesome, thank you. And I guess I'll I'll replace current share. Okay. And we didn't really talk about timing, so maybe just like let me know if I'm going on and on, but I'll I generally do try to keep things short. I also see a lot of familiar names in the list, but I'm gonna speak to these to these sort of this like work stream as if people don't know anything about it, because I think ideally that's the audience that we're trying to reach for. But I know a lot of people in this. I see in the room, I see a lot of names that know a lot more about some of these specific topics than I do, so way more, which is great. Meaning that they can help out if there are questions that I can't answer, which I can't answer a lot. Okay, so on the topic of model network standards and network building tools, I know that's very sort of open and general and that's by design. So because we're still gaining some definition on what this means, what would be useful. So I'm Lisa Zorn, I work for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which is the San Francisco NPO, and I'm also a Zephyr Board member. So what I'm going to talk about is with this project, which I'll try to define as we go through, what problems are we trying to solve? What's happened so far? What's next? And then I kind of like to do color coding because it helps me feel structured. So, all right, starting from my perspective purely. What problems are we trying to solve? So from my perspective, as a travel modeler at a transportation planning agency, my problem is that I need to be able to build a series of networks for future scenarios. So starting with the present, but sort of interim mirrors up to the horizon that are built on top of a baseline network representing what's on the ground today. And I need flexibility and transparency, so I can easily see things like when does a project get built? I can do things like move projects between build years easily. I can update a project and have it reflected in all years. And those are just some examples, but there's basically it's the flexibility of building networks based on what's what a set of projects. So kind of like having a menu of projects and then building a network. I think this is a pretty common problem for different folks at agencies. Although I think I'm I'm still trying to get my head around like what people do, because I think everybody kind of does their own thing in this space. So that's what I that's what I care about. Speaking on behalf of Dr. Zhu, who is he here? I hope he's here, who's who's who I've been working with on this. My understanding and I I sent him, I like I queried to see if this was okay, but didn't get a confirmation. So he can correct me if I'm like totally wrong, but my understanding of what he's been saying is as an academic researcher doing research in multi-resolution modeling, I think he needs to be able to develop multi-resolution networks collaboratively with researchers and protect practitioners. And I think he also wants to be able to convert networks to work with different types of network software because he develops some network software. So that that's my understanding, but I do want to say we're still interested in hearing what people perceive are the problems in this space. And so I want to know what you as a little tiny rabbit, what your modeling network challenges are. And so this link, oops, this link, which I will let me see, I I think I can put a version of it in the chat. If you want to fill that out, that would be awesome. Okay, back to back to my screen. Here, oops. Where did it go? Sorry. Okay. So that I want to know what what if 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 am I the only one who wants to do this? What do other people do? What do other people want to do? What are your barriers? All right, so from the premise of what I want to do, because it's all about me. We'll start with Network Wrangler as part of the story. So here's a solution that has been around for solving my problem. Network Wrangler is a tool that builds up a series of future networks from a base network and an ordered list of projects. That's that's the simple version. And so some of the design principles in Network Wrangler is that building the network is a repeatable process. Git and tagging are used for version control, and this is really important because we have practical realities like we have a plan amendment that occurs three years after the original model analysis. And so now all of a sudden, we need to build that model network we built three years ago, but with some specific modifications like the addition and removal of a single project. Or moving a a network, I mean, a project from one model year to another model year, because it's been just delayed or a scope change or something like that. So whoops, so we need to have a single network specification that can be used to define multiple related scenarios. That's another thing is that a lot of times the new project is a set of projects. And then the plan is a set of projects, is an additional set of projects on top of that. So it has to be a superset. So the network specification needs to be really flexible to accommodate that kind of thing. So here's sort of a flow diagram that I think helps to illustrate how it works is that you have a network specification, it lists projects that go in in different years. You also have a base network and for network, this version of Network Wrangler, the networks are all in cube. So it's pretty specific. The base network goes into Network Wrangler along with the network specifications and all these project definitions. And then outcomes, future model networks that we use. So to get a little more concrete, I'm going to share the network specification that is. So I'm gonna stop share and move to my browser. So this is a little painful because it's a live document you can see modified last week. But this is what a network specification looks like for Network Wrangler. We have this one, this one specifically does two sets of networks. It does a no project, which is a committed list and also the plan, which is projects on top of that. So you can see it's fairly human readable. There's these projects they they have, we try to give them human readable names. There's the roadway versions and the transit versions. You can even give them additional arguments for phases, things like that. And so it's a little bit ugly, but it's not. I think it's fairly readable and our planners have accepted that they can look at this as a reference and they're okay with that. Because they know where the link is and they can say, well, if I want to know what's in a network, I can check this. And they can also look at that. We can point them to a past version if they want to know what was built in a network that we made a month ago. So anyway, so this this has worked for us. So I mean, it's a little long because you know, and here's here are the the I I scrolled through it really quickly, but there was the committed projects and then these are the blueprint projects, so the planned projects. So that's just an illustration. I I don't, you know, whether or not you find that readable, I'm not sure, but we certainly find it an improvement to, you know, what I think was happening before this where people would say, what's in this network? And be like, I don't know, maybe poke around in it and check it out, figure it out. I don't, that that seemed to be insufficient. Jinbo asked about Git and tagging. Git is a version control system. People use it with GitHub and I think that it's a very, very useful tool for anyone who writes any code at all and needs revision history. So but that's a short answer. There's a lot more online. Network Wrangler history. So Network Wrangler started at SFCTA and I see some of Network Wrangler's parents present today. And other people who've worked on it started in 2010. I looked, I I had to look it up. So it's it's 14 years old. And I I was also working at SFCTA. So when I came to MTC, I brought Network Wrangler with me and we have been using a fork of it here. And you know, we continue to use it to this day and we continue, as you can see with a Git history. And just this week, or not this week, a couple of months ago, we added project QA visualization as an option because we realized that this was really, really important and necessary. People were requesting it all the time. But basically what it does is when you're building a when Network Wrangler is building a network, it'll save a copy of the network right before optionally, if you ask for it. It'll save a copy of the network right before applying a project. And then compare it with the the network after the project. Look at those diffs, throw them into shape files and then you can load them into Tableau and you can have these visualizations that automatically get populated with attributes. So like this one on the left is a Express Lane project and you can see the toll class changed, the use changed. And on the right, this is a Bart extension project. And so there this these visualizations can come out of it automatically. Which is really, really useful. And this, these are just the map versions that you can make custom tables and so forth. So I think that this has been really, really useful because because we just need to be able to QA projects and make sure that we have confidence that they're doing what they're supposed to do. All right, so I'm sorry, I don't mean to make it sound like a Network Wrangler sales pitch, but it is a very critical tool in our toolbox. All right, so moving on, also in a related space, there's the GMNS or the General Modeling Network specification. And there are also people in this in this room who have actively worked on this. With myself less so, I was I was involved in conversations at the start, but then I got sort of sidetracked and have to focus on Network Wrangler because that's really a core part of my work. So my understanding of the general network, general modeling network specification or GMNS, or some people call it Jiminus, is that it's a universal data standard for roadway model networks. So it's basically intended to serve as the roadway version of GTFS. And the origin is, you know, that it's it's to enable the same sorts of things that we're talking about, except Network Wrangler is maybe more specific, but it's to enable collaboration on tools that deal with model networks, because we're all doing these model network things. Maybe we should, I don't know, have some tools that make this easier. And so a little bit of history of Jiminus, in 2019, the Zephyr Project Management Group formed to oversee it. And this is, it's on the, I'll have a better link. Oh, look, it it's on the Zephyr website if you want to read more about it. And in 2020, FHWA and Volpi staff developed the initial Jiminus, and I believe they're both in the room, I think I saw their names. So they can answer questions about it and they released Jiminus version 0.9 in 2020. And then Jiminus version 0.96 alpha, oh, look, Scott said was the non-alpha was released today. So you can find that on their website. So that's some history with Jiminus. Switching back to Network Wrangler. Network Wrangler, what I just talked about was Network Wrangler 1. We use it for cube networks, we use it for a planning network. But that, you know, planning level networks are kind of receding into the background and we're going to start moving forward into an All-Streets network and the source of the All-Streets network is commonly becoming OpenStreetMap. So along with that, we've been developing Network Wrangler 2, also known as network underscore Wrangler with lowercase. And it's very similar in structure and in principle and design guidelines to Network Wrangler 1, except it, you know, it's, you know, not, it's it's meant to be working with an All-Streets network. It's meant to not be tied to any particular commercial package. So we it's so I call these model networks. It's the inputs and outputs are model networks now. And also the project cards and the projects in Network Wrangler 1 are kind of defined as a bunch of pieces of code, which is not the most user friendly thing for network coders. And so we've redefined project cards as more text based kind of MAML files, which is more human readable, more approachable, more understandable. And 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 we've started calling them project cards in that context. And so you can see on this link. This is where Network Wrangler is being developed. Some Network Wrangler history. Metcalf and MTC began working with WSB and Elizabeth Saul, who I think is here to develop Network Wrangler, network underscore Wrangler, Network Wrangler 2. In 2020, a functional prototype was released. And very recently, Network Wrangler version 1.0 Alpha is released. So I think we're looking forward to Network Wrangler 1.0. So what's next? That's that's the background context. I know it was a lot of concepts, but what's next is we kind of have these two work streams. And so the first thing that's next is GMNS, we'd like to see it become multimodal. So GMNS, which is very roadway oriented, plus you have your active modes. Plus GTFS also. In theory, GTFS covers transit, but I think maybe some some integration between GMNS and GTFS makes sense. And so defining the next version of GMNS plus that's multimodal would would be necessary for us because we need to have those multimodal networks. What the other thing that's next is that GMNS and Network Wrangler are a sort of two streams of work with, I think, similar but not identical purposes. And they're related. So GMNS now is a draft network standard without a toolset, although there are some tools, but they're not the same. And Network Wrangler is a draft toolset without a network standard. So it's kind of like a chicken and egg problem. I think different people have needed those different things with different priorities. And so the goal is to bring them back together again, ideally, and have a a merging. So ease, we want to ease Network Wrangler adoption by implementing a universal network standard. Oh, look, maybe GMNS plus is the one to use. And then we also want to be able to make GMNS plus more useful by pairing it with network tools like, oh, hey, maybe maybe Network Wrangler. So I think that's what we're hoping to do. And by we, I mean that last year, Dr. Zhu and I and some other KPIs applied for and were awarded an NSF pathways to enable open source systems opposed grant. And it's around GMNS, GMNS plus, network data standards, network data tools. So I I'm, we're hoping that we can use this grant to both develop GMNS plus to marry Network Wrangler and GMNS plus together again in harmony. And so that's that's the goal at this point. So that's what I have. And again, if you, if we would like to hear from people. And I think we're still open, like, is this a good idea? Is this a terrible idea? Tell us your network challenges. Maybe your network challenges are completely different than what I think they are. And also, oops, on the other side, you can get involved on the Zephyr website. There is, you can find the network data standard and management tools page, which is basically the GMNS page. Or you can email me and that's it. And let's see, and I'll, I don't know if we, do we have time for questions or did it take too long?
Maybe, maybe we can go to the next speaker if there's questions, we can.
Okay, and I can reply in chat too. So.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine. Our next, our next two, so Lisa was sort of invited to sort of fill out the the session here, but our next two presenters are actually papers that were submitted to BTR, but that we sort of felt at some connection to open science for for various reasons. So our next speaker will be Billy Charlton.
Hello, thank you for having me and good day and good evening for any of you like me who are in Europe. Just had a very nice sunset here in Berlin. Let me share my screen. And let's see if that works. Can you see the title screen?
Yeah, it's good.
Hopefully, yes. All right, so this is a little different. I'm not going to talk about Network Wrangler, either one or two. But I am going to talk about a tool that we developed in Berlin. This was originally, I mean, I guess it was my PhD research, but it sort of came about as an accident. After suddenly needing a lot of data visualization during the COVID lockdowns based on MATSIM. We built some internal tools that then became so useful internally that we decided to sort of reformulate it into a generic tool that anybody who is a modeler like us can now use. So I'm Billy Charlton. I am a researcher at Technische Universität Berlin. Part time and part time I'm working on open source tools like this, like SimRapper. So what is SimRapper? First of all, this is, it's not really an advertisement. This is, it's not a product. It's an open source web-based data viz platform for us, for us travel modelers. And what it does basically fall into three different categories. One is it lets you explore your model inputs and outputs. Two is it lets you build dashboards for analyzing and comparing your simulation runs. And the third is that it allows you to create public facing data, very data rich websites essentially for free, just for the the cost of the hosting, which with things like GitHub pages can essentially be zero. So those are the three things it does. I'm going to go through this really quickly. SimRapper is quite feature rich and very complicated. And so since I only have a few minutes, instead of telling you all the details of how it works, I'm just going to go through some of the the highlights of the things you can do with it. And then either in the panel discussion, we can talk about it some more or just find me after the conference. I love talking about this stuff, so it doesn't matter. All right, so the 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 thing we found out when we were building our internal tools was that no one wanted another system that they needed to upload all of their model runs to. And keeping things, you know, like a backend server synced up with the where you were model running your simulations was just a huge problem. And so SimRapper is designed to sort of meet you where you are, which is that you run your models and then your files are probably in some run folders with some sort of a hierarchy on your, either on your 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 desktop machine or on some cloud server somewhere. You probably already have some post-processing scripts in Python or R or some you know, some notebooks in whatever language you're using, could be whatever it is. And now you want to see your results. And so what we found was that the most recent versions of web browsers actually have some new APIs that allow you to view the local the local folders on your computer. And SimRapper can see those folders. And then with a help from a few little small configuration files, which you can drop in there, you can actually look at all your model outputs. So enough slides. Let's actually flip to an actual demo because that's way more interesting. So let's go to simrapper github.io, which is the main site. There is lots of documentation and news and things like that, but basically let's go to enter site. This is the website itself. When you're in Chrome or Edge, you get this nice big green button that says open local folder. If you're using Safari or Firefox, the API isn't there yet. And on the SimRapper documentation site, it explains how to access your local files using those browsers too. But let's say I have a data folder and I happen to create a BTR6 demo folder. And if I click select on that, I can now see the folders on my computer. And so this is actually pretty cool. So this is the, you know, just my regular file browser in Finder on my Mac, but on Windows it looks the same. And so these are the same folders that are here. And so let's say I wanted to, or let's pretend that I had some model run outputs in this SFCTA folder. I dropped some some OMX format skim files and a couple other data files in there. And with SimRapper, I can now open up, for example, this highway skim file, which is an OMX format. And I can start browsing through my, you know, this eight gigabyte file full of 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 matrix data. And so I can look at the rows, I can look at the columns. I can pick an individual row or column and then see all of the different matrices that are in there. And so depending on what you have in your matrix data, you can sort of make heads or tails of this. The way that this works is that there's already a boundary file with the zone system in the same folder. You might be wondering, how does the HDF5 or OMX file know what the boundaries are? And that's the answer is that the the that file has been pre-supplied. If you haven't pre-supplied that, you can actually just drag the file in to this browser and it will work also. The there's a data tab, so you can actually look at what the actual numbers in the any of these matrices are. There's a super fancy heat map where if you can actually want to like see your matrix, you can actually look in and see that there's some structure to the values of the data that are in there. So this is just one example of the the type of thing that you can that you can do with this tool without having done anything. Like I literally just pointed the web browser to this folder. There's even a diff mode where I can say, all right, set this as the base. And now if I want to compare the AM to the PM, I can drag the PM file in there. And now what it's going to do after finishes loading is now it's actually showing us the difference between the AM and the PM travel times for these different zones. Literally drag and drop, didn't have to do anything at all, other than I had the the Geo JSON or a shape file of the boundaries and some HDF5 format files, which are used by ActivitySim. And I think they sim as well. And we could add others if we want because it's open source. So that's just one example of the kind of thing we can do with this tool. In addition, there's also I mean, there's a million other types of views, like I could, that was the the zonal viewer, but I think and I could also show you some like, let's see, output trips. Let's see if I want to find some transit. So if I was a MATSIM user, here are lots of stored folders on our local server here in Berlin for all these different scenarios that we've run. Kappus is a small city, sort of southeast of Berlin. And I can go to my output run and I can actually see, okay, well, I want to look at the the transit output for MATSIM and you can actually go through and see the data. Okay, so that's that's an example of the types of things you can do just sort of in this first mode where you're just sort of exploring your data. I didn't show you the network link viewer, but there's one of those as well. And there's many others too. Like if I go to examples on the the documentation website, you can see that there are several visualizations that are specific for MATSIM, because that's where this all started. But there's also some very general useful visualization types that anyone who has some shape files and some network files might might be interested in in looking at. And so each one of these, if you click on it, shows you exactly sort of how to set up SimRapper to use the use these these different types of visualizations. And there's guides and how to set up dashboards, so on and so on. Okay, so that's sort of thing number one. If I then go to this guy again, let's see if I can get it to change. There's actually a new map builder, which I call easy mode. Instead of having to deal with all of these different file types and these configuration files, we have something new, which is this thing, if you've ever used Kepler GL, you'll recognize the sort of this, just drop your files in. And so you can load in any tabular data, whether it be CSV or DBF files, et cetera. And then once you drag those files in, you can then do some some actual interesting stuff with it. Oops, so I missed. Let me try that again. The demo gods are not with me today. There we go. Yeah, and so then. Yeah, and so then actually I can start playing with the shapes and the fill and all that. I'm not going to bore you with that stuff. If you've ever used QGIS, this should look really familiar with all the different options for the types of things you would want to do there. That's thing number one. Thing number two is, all right, I'm not just looking to explore my data and build a single map, but I actually want to build some dashboards for analyzing and comparing my different data sets. And so this is again, something that we did initially for MATSIM. There is this one crazy trick for those of you who are MATSIM users. If in your main controller, you add this one line, oops, to, to your, to the Java code, which launches MATSIM, which says add SimRapper. What it will do is it will take the standard MATSIM outputs and it will run some post-processing on them and it will drop all of the SimRapper config files into your run folder. And then with that, you can then start looking at dashboards. So again, I will go to this public section and there happens to be, I think, in version one, so here is what one of those standard dashboards looks like. Let me hide the sidebar here. Oh, so because I was showing you San Francisco, it doesn't know that we're actually over here in Europe now. So network view, you know, I mean, you've seen dashboards before, pie charts, bar charts. You can double-click and just look at the bike trips or all of them. Plenty of plot, different types of plots that you can look at and examine. Transit, noise, emissions, these things sort of come out kind of for free with that one line. If you're not a MATSIM user, you would probably want to do some sort of a post-processing on your travel diary or the, the output, you know, trips file or whatever you get out of, out of your model. So this is our most recent simulation for our public Berlin model, which is completely open, open data, open code, open everything. And you can see we have some comparisons for traffic counts. Everything's quite interactive. It's, it's pretty fancy, pretty fancy, does lots of things. That's dashboards. I'll just show one more thing and then I'll stop talking, which is that the third thing, oh, I forgot to tell you how this all works, which is that I, I told you that it expects your files to be in a folder, you know, and this is where all of your output files are. And Lisa had mentioned that the new version of Network Wrangler is using YAML files. YAML is really easy. It's just a text file where basically you have key, colon, value, key, colon, value. And it's very human readable. And what these little YAML files do, if SimRapper finds them in the folder, it reads them and then builds the visualizations based on these files. What's the really great about this is that if you have a project folder with, you know, 200 model runs or five or whatever, you can create one set of configuration files in sort of a top-level folder and it will use those configs for all of the model runs that you have. And so you don't have to drop these little files into every single model run. It will do it automatically for you as soon as it finds them anywhere in the tree. So that's how that works. I already showed you that we have lots and lots of visualization types. The last thing, and this is super quick, is that the other thing you can do with this is create public-facing data websites essentially for free. So this is really interesting because all of us in this room, we are all data analysts. We are travel modelers and we already have the tools that we're using. Like I know Lisa loves Tableau and other people are using notebooks, but some of these tools are not really useful for building things that the public would use. Some of them are great, some of them are not so great. And we found that adding this ability to sort of remove all of the SimRapper Chrome and replace it with your own stuff is something that is, was super useful. So I'll just show you a couple examples. Let's see, I don't know, that's the freight viewer, where is it? Here we go. This is a, a project site for, for the Semiklar Valley BTA. This is not MATSIM, this is a beam model. This is more curated where they had five different, like, I guess these are like service areas for, for, for different types of demand responsive transit. And for each of these different service areas, they wanted to be able to see sort of where are the trips either coming or going. You can like change the size of the aggregation. I think this is for Berriessa, then there's Campbell. No, that was Campbell, this is Sunnyvale. And so there's some pretty fancy animations of what the vehicles are actually doing and you can zoom around and do that. I think that's about it. The, it, it's a lot to take in in 10 minutes. The, I think the best thing to do if you want to get started with this tool is to just look at the docs. We have some tutorials, there's sample data, there are example configuration Yamals for every data visualization. We have a discussion board, we have an issue tracker on GitHub. Please don't berate me, we have like a hundred open bugs right now because we're finally getting a lot of users outside of our department. And so people are using SimRapper literally all over the world, it's being used in Australia. We have Mexico City model, a bunch of things in California because of Joaquín León in San Francisco and also San Diego. And the ActivitySim Consortium has been interested in this, like they, we had a contract, I think like a year and a half ago. And so maybe there will be some further work with ActivitySim on, on this as well. I've been talking very fast to get through this as quickly as possible. I think the last thing is that that map builder tool is brand new and we still need to sort of import all of those other visualization types into it. Another thing is that it's called SimRapper, but really, right now, it's sort of after Sim. Like this is the thing you use to look at the model results after the model has finished running. The reality is that we do actually have a model run manager, like a run launcher internally at Teu Berlin, but we haven't released that yet. Because for that to work, you sort of need some sort of cloud storage or some like, you know, cloud compute for it to work. And that means it can't be free. And so this is completely open source right now. And so we're trying to figure out what to do with this. The 50% of me that's just building SimRapper things wants to tell you, you know, just talk to me if you want to build something, you know, internally. But the open source version needs to be, and I want it to be completely, completely free. Additional things get added when people ask me. So if you have ideas of how this could be better, please talk to me because that's, that's why we're here. Wrap up, this thing does a lot. I'm only showing you sort of the, just the very, you know, the, the top level. We've been using it since 2021. It's really transformed the workflow at our group. And the, the data visualization lessons that we've learned along the way have been really useful. Not just for MATSIM users, not just for SimRapper users even, but for all of us. We're trying to figure out what these models are trying to tell us. So with that, I will say thank you. And if we have time for questions, go for it. If not, we can talk about it at the end.
I think there's a few questions in the chat. But maybe just in the interest of time, we'll move on to the next presenter. And we'll have lots of time at the end, I think, for questions with the, the discussion time. Well, our next presenter is getting us set up. I, I didn't really give a, a, a long expla- introduction to either Billy or at least, because I think most people in the room are, are familiar with them. I'll just briefly say that our next presenter from Enrel, Jack Greenlee, is a, is a researcher at Enrel. But I think interestingly, just be in psychology and cognitive studies in philosophy. So it's, it's interesting to see the various fields that people come into transportation modeling, so.
Yeah, thank you for that. I've, I've had my fingers in a few other things, social sciences, software development and, you know, learning a lot about transportation right now. Let me pull up my slides to just make sure everyone can see this. Look good? Thanks so much. thrilled to be, you know, speaking here today, representing Enrel. I'm going to be talking to you about, I think this, you know, plays in really well. Last two presentations, great presentations. You know, if you want to do modeling, if you want to visualize data, you need to collect that data first. And so I'm talking about travel behavior data collection. So the challenges and things we noticed in that area. And then I'm presenting a open source platform that we have at Enrel to, you know, collect that kind of data. Of course, representing Enrel here alongside my colleague, who I just saw was in the call, Shankari. So a little bit about travel behavior data. Let's review the areas where a different types of travel behavior data are useful. In planning and policymaking, there's a need for data to sort of illustrate how people are using the services, whether that services roads or public transit, you know, to, to plan effectively and allocate funds effectively. I mean, our environmental impact, you need to, of course, we're curving mode shift, electrification, figuring out what kind of, what modes people are taking and what other sustainable options could be provided to fit someone's observed pattern, pattern of travel. In terms of socio-economic justice, you could examine what populations or demographics are facing barriers to mobility or, you know, figuring out if they do not have access to preferred modes, sustainable modes of transportation and assessment of emerging technologies and top technologies that are in the adoption phase. So again, on electrification, how are people using EVs? How does that coincide with charging behavior? And for other technologies, for example, e-bikes, with e-bike rebate programs, you want to see how people respond when they gain access to a novel mode of transportation. And so to do all this, you need oftentimes like a really cohesive and holistic view of someone's pattern of, of travel. The central point here is if you can't measure something, you can't improve it. And the specific aspects of travel that you will want to capture in that measurement will vary depending on the goals of your research. Which of those questions are you trying to answer? And the traditional methods of collecting that travel behavior data would have historically been like a physical diary or logbook that the participants filled out, creating a travel diary, all the trips that they had taken. Or this could have been done, you know, as an interview by phone or in person or by mail. But in any case, all these pieces of data would then have to be manually included in the database by researchers. There are obvious disadvantages to that approach. It's cumbersome to the participants and the researchers and prone to errors and self-reporting. But the, and, and the modern methods of collection using smartphone apps alleviates those issues. But I do think there's a couple aspects in which this traditional approach excelled that I want to focus on in these, like two examples from literature. So I'll make those bigger for you to see then. They're both examples of like more paper-based or form-based data collection. And naturally they have fields for date, time and location. You can sort of see those on the sides of the one on the left and to the right side of the example on the right, which are, you know, these are the when and where pieces of data, which are things that can easily be tracked by smartphones. But I, I want to point out these other columns. On the left example, these middle columns, there's more open-ended sections for participants to write details about the activities they perform or the details of travel. And on the right, there's a section to specifically fill in the specific vehicles that were used, which would be useful in analysis. For example, if you have the make and model of the vehicle and the distance traveled, you can pretty accurately estimate their travel, travel-related emissions. But we wouldn't have access to that information unless we specifically ask users for it in some form. So if we're just getting the when and where, we won't capture all those nuances. Now, the use of smart, smartphones is, as I said, the modern way of collecting travel behavior data. And I think we can and should use automatic sensing for geospatial temporal data or the when and where. And smartphones are great for this, which is more accurate, more reliable than a person trying to remember all their trips. And you can see a result of this on the right. We can create a travel diary like this. And this is before asking for any additional input from the user. So we, we show this directly to the user. It, it shows, you know, what days and what times they traveled, how far. And we can guess what the mode was based on speed and movement. But we won't be able to differentiate, for example, a gas car from an EV. And for some passive collection is good enough and they can just stop there. But if you want qual- qualitative data or more of the how and why questions, that's what these buttons are for, to collect additional information associated with a trip. And these questions can range in complexity. It could be fairly simple, like just asking participants to clarify whether that trip was a gas car or EV or deeper questions like how much did that trip cost? Or if it was a taxi or ride share trip, how did you, you know, how much did you spend? And then how much, how do you spend your time potentially between or during trips? And these are the things that the smartphone obviously cannot automatically determine. So we ask follow-up prompts. And our implementation of this sort of strategy is Enrel Open Path, open source platform for travel behavior data collection and analysis. Open source, of course, meaning anyone can use, modify and or contribute to the code. And with the backing of Enrel, we can also host it for groups who are wanting to use it for their research. We have a multi-tenant architecture, which means we can have multiple ongoing deployments, both in the US and around the world. Each deployment uses the same Enrel Open Path app and the same code, but they run in a separate instance. Since they share the same software, they all benefit from the improvements we make over time, but in a different container, different data, different configuration. The way we handle that qualitative user input is, as I said, allowing people to go back in the app and see what's automatically been sensed. We hope that that list will jog people's memory and allow them to go back and fill those details in on their own time. And when they fill it in, whether that's, you know, 10 minutes after the trip or several weeks after the trip, you know, that data gets updated and you can use it in your analysis. We find this is more effective than forcing users to fill in details immediately after a trip for any of the types of user input we're prompting for. This brings us to what we call the spectrum of qualitative user inputs, essentially just a, a scale of, you know, least complex to most complex. On, on the left, there's simple user inputs, asking users to fill in mode and purpose labels from a predefined set of options. A lower burden on the participants and likely less of their time you need to compensate them for. But you miss a lot of the qualitative aspects. And then, you know, a triple questionnaire is a custom survey that gets prompted for every trip. It can be as long or short as you want it to be and ask any questions you want, you want it to. And on the right, timing surveys, like a digital version of that paper-based activity journal that I showed before. So I'll show a couple, you know, screenshots that really illustrates these. Simple mode and purpose labels here. You might just click those two buttons and get a simple pop-up predefined set of options. This is where you might get a little bit more, you know, more nuance in your data. You can customize these surveys to have anything you want. There might just be one button, but it opens an entire, you know, display of, of survey with many questions on it. And if we're on the, the furthest side of the spectrum would be, you know, time-use surveys. So this could be a time-based response associated with either a trip or the time in between trips, between home places. And there could be multiple survey responses to one trip or place. So obviously, a, a larger user burden there. But this can be used for time-based, which is useful if you want to do activity-based travel demand modeling. You know, the idea that travels derive from the activities people want to engage in. So if you understand how people spend their time, you can better understand and model their, their patterns of behavior. And how do we support all these different configurations within one app? Now, the short answer is that for every ongoing study, there's a unique configuration file that enables or disables the comparison system. Because although, although the project is open source, you know, most people don't want to dig around the code and customize the system to their needs. So we support as much customization as we can through conflict ages alone. We find that often people just want a solution they can think of as a black box and not worry about the inner workings. So we do allow people to think of it this way, but it's not just a black box, it's a black box with knobs. So you don't have to worry too much about the inner workings, but you do have controls allowing you to, you know, tweak the, the behavior of the system. Among these options that you would, you know, find tweaking the options are in the kinds of user inputs that get prompted, whether that's, you know, mode of purpose or your own custom surveys. And there's also many miscellaneous options like miles or kilometers to distance. This is all to make, to make all of this easier, we have this user-friendly form. You see on the right, a screenshot from our GitHub, which is, we ask people to fill out this form and we can walk you through the available options, create a configuration file for you, or at least a good first draft. Some of the more complex customizations like custom surveys require a few other steps, which you'll see here. For the custom surveys, we use the standard format ODK, which is used by other free and open source projects, which means there are user, user-friendly tools that you can use to assist in creating them. And they support multiple languages, different question types, multiple choice, checkboxes, sliding scales, numbers and inputs, et cetera. And they support multiple languages, different question types, multiple choice, checkboxes, sliding scales, numbers and inputs, et cetera. And conditional branching, which allows you to show or hide survey questions based on previous answers in the survey. And they support validation as well. You should also note that the surveys themselves can show condition. So you might not not want to prompt your survey for every single trip, but only, you know, subset of those who are at a specific location or specific time. And just to better illustrate what you can do with these, you can either edit as a spreadsheet, as you see on the right. Or on the left, this is a survey builder called Kobo Toolbox. And they have a pretty handy thing, you know, similar interaction to if you've used Google Forms in the past. So to conclude, I'm just going to recap what I've covered. A wide range of qualitative input types that are useful to transportation research. These are needed because in order to improve transportation systems, you need to be able to measure the right aspects of how they're working. And for the when and where data, we can leverage automatic sensing on smartphones. For the how and why data, we need to prompt participants. And to configure the types of how and why questions that are prompted. We have this black box with knobs metaphor, which is a process we made as user-friendly as we can. And we will continue working on Open Path to support more use cases, filling in more of that spectrum. In the spirit of openness and academia. We believe that an open source platform is the most effective way to advance travel behavior research. Everyone separately working on their own implementation or making one-off apps tailored to a very specific use case. Is just not as efficient as everybody, you know, pooling their resources together to work on a unified platform. That could benefit from sustained development and improvement. So we encourage collaborations, as I say, and or just any feedback that you have. Don't hesitate to reach out to us at openpath@enrel.gov. And I'll, you know, thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions you have. Not sure if we're going to move to that larger discussion immediately or. You know.
Yeah, no, great. Thanks, Jack. We could maybe, we we can maybe take a few minutes for. For questions for for speakers. I just, I first, just I think it's really interesting to kind of see these different tools at various stages of. Of the model. So, you know, we have sort of data collection here and Lisa talking about tools that are helpful in model development. And then Billy talking about, you know, tools that are helpful in sort of the visualization output stage. So not by design, but I think we sort of have kind of covered the different stages of model development and tools that are useful there. Before we, I hand it off to Andre. Are there any burning questions that anyone wants to to pose to any of our three speakers before we transition? So there's a question. I'm sorry, I might have to ask for some clarification on this. I want to inquire the travel behavior for the pilgrims, how it would be different. I'm not sure maybe what's meant by pilgrims. Could you maybe clarify the question? Maybe we, maybe we, we, we can transition and, and if you want to maybe clarify that question in the chat box. And Jack could maybe answer it in the chat then. Thanks. So I'll hand it off to you, Andre.
All right, thank you. So, thank you very much to all our presenters. So we've, we've had a very nice introduction to a variety of. Tools related to open source data collection, open source software. Now, what we're going to do with the the second part of this session is that. We're going to transition to think a little bit more about the. Let's say that the bigger picture of what it takes to. To conduct science with open practices, open science practices. And so. Go ahead and share my screen here. Okay. So a brief introduction here, I'm going to do a quick introduction talking about open science practices. And then I'm going to introduce the our panelists that we have for the second. Second part of our session. And then we'll have a, it'll be followed by the panel discussion. And then at the end of that. I'm going to come back and I'll give a brief update on what the the Open Science Committee of the Zephyr Foundation here has been working on. So let me first talk a little bit more broadly about. Why do we actually, what are we talking about when we sit, when we talk about open science and what are the? Why are we interested in this? So, generally speaking, and now I'm approaching this from the, from the perspective of travel demand. Travel behavior researcher, travel man modeler. That the travel demand forecasting field, we have an innovative community of researchers, many of which are. Here in the session or at BTR in general. We have an innovative community of researchers that's really pushing methodological empirical boundaries. And we also have a large and vibrant community of practitioners that apply transportation models for a variety of forecasting and policy analysis purposes. And so. Now, over the last years, I think there's kind of been a growing awareness, certainly with the Zephyr Foundation, of what I'd call kind of disconnect between these two communities. And the the consequence of this is that scientific advances, improvements in modeling approaches or empirical practices. Are often slow to diffuse into practice and start being used by MPOs and and modeling practitioners. And that generally, there's kind of a sense that practitioners tend to have some difficulties adopting new modeling frameworks. That are developed by researchers and to transition them into practical applications. And so generally, the the issue here is that there are barriers that keep scientific advances from being open and accessible to all. That is not a desirable state of affairs. And so the solution to this would be to embrace more open science practices. And so what do we mean by that? So, generally speaking, what is open science? What do I mean when I talk about this? Well, the the overall idea is that when it comes to advancements in the state of transportation modeling. Anybody, regardless of whether you are a consultant, practitioner, a agency representative, or researcher. Should be able to do three things. One is access openly accessed results and outcomes of research without having to. Pay a lot of money for that. The second is for anything that is published, any sort of. Transportation trial behavior research, be able to examine the data that underlie that publication. So that's the idea of. Open access, this is the idea of open data. And to examine the models and the analyses that led to the results. So this is the idea of open code. There are kind of these three pillars here. And why do we, well, what is the benefit of following these kinds of practices? Well, first of all. It and mainly it allows others to reproduce and replicate research findings. So if I conduct research and I publish something. We, we really want others to be able to first take the same data, right? Whatever, however I achieved my results, to take the same data, same models. Re-run that and basically reproduce the results that I am, that I have found, and I'm publishing claiming to 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 have achieved. And the second thing that we want people to be able to do. Is to replicate research findings. And this is something that I personally actually feel is. Maybe even the more valuable part here is, right? If I conduct a study, let's say in Ohio, and I find, you know, certain demographic, for example, is. Interested in electric vehicle ownership. Well, that's just a finding about my sample. If we really want to achieve generalizable results and see whether this holds elsewhere. Then others should be able to take the approach that I used and implement that elsewhere in in other contexts and other geographical locations. And see whether they can reach the same conclusions about, for example, this link to electric vehicle adoption in my, in my example. So if we. If we publish our materials, our data, our code, our findings in a way that allow others to reproduce and replicate. Well, that's a way to increase the credibility and the result, the usefulness of our results. But also allow us to develop a better understanding of the relevance and the generalizability of them. But critically also, publishing things, publishing my code, publishing my data, making my results publicly accessible. That really supports a smoother transfer of modeling innovations to practice. Because anyone, anybody can view my code, view my data, and try to. Figure out what steps I took and how they could implement that in their own models, in their own frameworks. And then, of course, and kind of coming back to this example that I had with the electric vehicle. This is really a way to promote knowledge sharing, right? Anybody can retrace the steps that I took to get to my result. And try and replicate this, try to reproduce things. This is a way to allow us to build collective wisdom as a field, right? Not just have these one-off, collection of one-off little projects, but really. Collectively work on solving bigger problems. Now, another aspect of this, and I think this connects directly to to the presentations that we just had. Is that openness in. And research findings, data sharing and code sharing. That really is kind of a natural way to also encourage us to use more open source data formats. And that gets at another problem here, which is I can be as open as I want with my data. Well, there's still a big sort of hurdle here, which is that often, generally speaking, we tend to work with. Fragmented, non-standardized data formats. And that really forces researchers basically to relearn, recreate, or reinvent data specifications with every new research project, right? And so sorts of open source data formats, like what Lisa talked about, these are also an attempt to. Introduce a little more standardization, which has benefits for allowing people to share data and also reducing the amount of friction that's involved. In me kind of picking up a data set that somebody else created or worked with and building on that. So, now despite everything I'm talking about here, about how wonderful and great open science practices are. The reality is that these principles are not widely followed. There are many reasons for that. That is, there are structural reasons, there are institutional reasons. We're going to talk about that a little bit in our panel discussion. But, you know, ultimately, it comes to, we, we. We come to the conclusion that. There are few incentives for. To follow such practices, right? And generally speaking, few rewards for researchers. And of course, possible downsides. So, for example, I might be afraid that I'm going to lose my privileged data access. I invested a lot of money into. Collecting a data set. Why should I be making that available to everybody else? So, with all that said, what are the steps that we can take here? First of all, you know, I think you've, you've, our audience, you've gotten, certainly gotten a. A good impression of that with the three last presentations that we had. There's a lot of momentum right now around open source mobility status standards, open source software. But beyond that, that's kind of creating an infrastructure here, right? Beyond that, we also need to work on changing conventions and discipline. In terms of what we expect from researchers, what departments expect from researchers, and what the incentive systems are. Maybe we can create something that rewards people more for open science contributions. So, at the Zephyr Foundation, we've been working on developing open science guidelines. I'll talk about that at the end, closer to, well, three o'clock central time. But generally speaking, the more endorsements and support we have for open reproducible research, the better. So, we will transition now to a panel discussion. We have three, three fantastic panelists today. So we've got JP Helveston from George Washington University, Bryce Nichols from the Puget Sound Regional Council, and Andrew Rohn from RSG. Consulting firm. And so they can offer us a variety of perspectives, both on the benefits of open science practices and obstacles we're facing. When it comes to sharing our work and the next steps that we can take. So I'm going to introduce them a little bit more with their bios, but let me stop my screen sharing here. Okay, so, let me just see, do we have everyone? Yes, okay. Hello, panel? Mohammed, is there, there's not some way of kind of focusing on the panel only, right? I think we just kind of have the. All the attendees together on the screen, is that right? Mohammed? Okay.
Let me try to figure it out.
I think, Andre, that's, that's just individual users. So if you click on view at the top, you can switch it from speaker to gallery or. Okay.
Okay. All right, so let me give a brief introduction here, so. I'll just go in the order in which you appear on my screen. So JP Helveston is research engineer and choice modeler, and also developer, musician, swing dancer, and assistant professor at George Washington University. In Department of Engineering Management Systems Engineering. He's consistently made his code, data, and papers openly available on his research website. Which is. Which. Which is wonderful. It's also something that's still fairly rarely done, and therefore we want to bring him in to talk a little bit about his experiences. And then we have Andrew Rohn, who is a senior consultant at RSG. Prior to joining RSG, Andrew was a transportation modeling manager at the Ohio Kentucky Indiana Regional Council of Governments. We directed all travel modeling, data collection, analysis, application development. He received his bachelor's of urban planning from the University of Cincinnati and MS in civil engineering from the University of South Florida. And then we have Bryce Nichols, who is a senior modeler at the Puget Sound Regional Council. He has decade of experience in transportation planning and modeling. And holds an MS in civil engineering from UT Austin and a BS in civil engineering from Texas A&amp;M University. So thanks to all of you for joining our panel today. I have a set of questions to get us started here with the conversation, but. To everybody who's in the session, please feel free to throw in any questions, items that you would like us to discuss. All right. So. Yeah, we've, I, I'll start here, talking about, you know, I discussed the idea of transfer of modeling innovations. From research into practice. And so. My first question I'd like to ask you, Andrew, you've been on the. Side of a, you've worked both in an agency and in consulting and. Assuming you've been working on implementing models that are supposed to work in practice and have dealt with. Maybe trying to figure out what's been, what what's going on in research. Have you faced these kinds of challenges when you. Look at transferring models, modeling innovations, and how have you addressed those?
So with academic model or academic work. There's a few things we look at to, you know, consider implementing them. One of them is application, you know, if we can, if we actually need what is being applied. There's lots of great research out there that isn't travel behavior. So it's, you know, obviously that's not something we look at. But there's a fair number of things that, you know, for whatever reason, we can't use. I've seen stuff that use data sources that. You know, it may have been great in one situation or maybe in one state. But having worked at a three-state MPO and have worked with MPOs that are multi-state, multi-jurisdictional. Sometimes data is a huge pain and sometimes getting the right data in place is. It becomes the critical thing. It's not necessarily the research, it's making the research work. You know, sometimes documentation is an issue, but that's, I think, sort of third place behind making sure the research is what we're looking for in terms of. Implementing a solution for a client or, you know, a problem we were dealing with at OKI. And then this, you know, that's one of the most important, and the data, you know, just trying to make sure it's something that we can do.
And how have you addressed these kinds of challenges? Have, do you feel like data standards could have, for example, been a. A, say, a helpful, helpful tool here to kind of smoothen this transition?
When it's possible. So there's sometimes that data standards are easy to. Um when it's possible. So there's sometimes that data standards are easy to enforce, you know, with things like traffic counts. Um household surveys, you know. Uh we've seen a demonstration here that, you know, if you do one region and it's one household travel survey, generally those. Even with two competing, you know, if it's uh let's say Open Path and our move, you can kind of get those together pretty well. Um the big breakdowns are uh a lot of the employment data sources. So I've worked with ES two O two, Info USA and a few others, and it's. You know, sometimes what works in one region doesn't work in another. Um so that's one that, yeah, we'd like to have open standards, but or data standards. But it's not always feasible, given the vendors and given that sometimes we have to go through some hoops to get that data.
Um, all right, thank you. Um I, so um Bryce, let me, let me ask you, since you also, you're currently working for an MPO. Um you know, and and Andrew mentioned the point about. Um. The difficulty of of working with data from various sources and various regions. Um. You you made a point, and I I'd love for you to elaborate on this briefly. Um you you made a point in your email about. Uh big data tools and about sort of proprietary data that we sometimes work with. Um what, can you speak a little bit more about the challenges here that come with, say, increasing use of. Big data tools? What kinds of big data are we talking about? And how does that impact our our work as modelers?
Yeah, I think I was kind of thinking the opposite of what we were initially thinking of. Agencies having responsibility and the role of putting all of our data out there for. You know, public consumption or to work, you know, with researchers or whoever. Um that's one direction, but you know, there's also the question now that we have access to these. Um we're big data tools, which we're a little more unfamiliar with the algorithms that go into it. Kind of, it's going the opposite direction of having open data and open processes. Um and we've seen that there's, there's been a lot of interest in that. We've worked with partners. Um transit agencies in our regions, uh for instance, that are interested in using these tools for different applications and that kind of asked us to help vet them and see. How useful they are, and we're still kind of wary of that. Um because there's a lot of great trends happening in open data. We're kind of collaborating together and working all these projects, yet. There's these tools which promise, you know, to provide a lot of utility um and addressing all issues that we use for planning, but. Um we we can't really get the information of how it's being done. And while it might be useful, it's a little bit of a a concern for us. It just kind of makes us pause. Um it's wrapped up in the bigger question of how data gets used and it's consumed and. Um you know, and AI now, language-based AI is, the rest of the world is kind of caught up to these questions that we've been having. For years, I think, in our industry of um. Data and how it's used with these kind of big data models, um you know, passively collected data, all of that. Um so we're still struggling with that. You know, and that's, it's another way to kind of take the conversation. You know, I don't know how how much we want to delve into that direction, but it's just another one of the pieces we consider when we start thinking about like. How are data is open and how it's used and like kind of the philosophy of what we should be considering when we talk about data when it's consumed or produced.
Oh, thank you. Okay, um. So. You know, of course, with with big data tools, actually, JP, um. Can I can I ask you, uh you have, so you've very consistently been publishing data and code with with articles that you've published. Have you, have you typically, or have you previously used, say, proprietary data or or uh. Sort of data from big, big data sources, like what we're talking about here and. How have you, have you dealt with issues around transparency and and proprietary restrictions?
Yeah, so two of our most recent papers uses a proprietary data set um of uh vehicle listings on. Websites all over the country from dealerships. So it's it's a company that sort of web scrapes and collects all this information and. We purchased a subscription to go through that data set. So this is their business model. Um so we can't make it public, right? But there's a lot of things we can do to still. I think achieve some of the goals of what open science uh have, like being able to have reproducible work and. Um hopefully work that can be replicated. Um so we'll make our entire codebase public. And so you can at least go, if you can read our code line by line and understand what we're doing. Um and the calculations we're making, but we also put like samples of the data in there, right? So you can run it and you should be able to fully reproduce everything, except the results aren't going to be exactly the same. They're going to be a little bit different because it's just a small sample. Um so when I, when I make a, when I negotiate for a subscription to proprietary data, I always ask, kind of make at least a sample public or something like that. And almost, most places are more than willing to say, sure, that that's fine. We're not really risking anything with that. And it allows me to. Um at least be as open as I can, right? Um and and then I also, I try to go even further if I can, like if I can make an anonymized version of this public. I ask every question I can when I'm signing contracts to say. How far can I go with making this public? Um without getting into trouble and getting my university into trouble, you know? Um so, so those are questions, but but sometimes you have to work with that, right? That's the only data source you have and. Um and then other times, obviously, there's just regulatory restrictions, like you're dealing with private data that you, it's not ethical to make it public, so. Same thing, you can anonymize it, make a sample available, um things like that. So I I think there's things you can do to. To work with private data.
Um. Have have you, uh have you ever run into some of these concerns, like what Bryce was just talking about, about. That proprietary vendors might also not be terribly open about sort of the process that created the data?
Yeah, if I if I can't figure out or understand how uh some data were generated, I'm going to be. Way less willing to to use it. I mean, you also are putting your own reputation on at stake if you're going to use it, right? If you're going to write a paper and you do all this work and you have some finding, reviewers are going to say, well, how, where did the data come from? And you go, I don't know. That's not going to go very well. Um um so professionally, that's that's not very, not very good. You you really need to to know. So um I've, this is, this example I just mentioned is basically the only time I've ever worked with a. Proprietary group. Um but we've had many, many conversations and they make all of their stuff pretty open about how it's, how it's collected. So um I feel pretty confident in in what we're getting. Um so, so yeah, that's that's on you, though. You know, your job is to vet your data, whether you're collecting it or it's coming from a third party. Um you're going to have to be able to justify it one way or another.
All right, now.
I can jump in on that point.
Yes, please.
There's two parts to vetting data. Um one of them is vetting the accuracy in general, which is true. You need to do that. Another one is accuracy for the use that you're using. Um I did a a study on the eclipse, the twenty seventeen eclipse. And looked at two different big data vendors. Um one of them. Both, both were great vendors. Well, one of them, I have to say that because it's, oh, it was our merge data, RSG data. Um but the other one was a commercial vendor. And when I looked at the eclipse day, Monday, August seventeenth, I think it was, compared to. And compared the two data sources, they were vastly different. And what I started figuring was the. Uh the commercial vendor was sort of pushing them, pushing the data towards a mean. Which for a normal purpose, a normal, you know, day in an MPO or in a state. Was fine for what we were using it for, it was just the worst thing to do. So it, it's a two-part question when you have this data vetting. It's, you know, is that okay? And in general, their process is great, but for the purpose we were using it, that it didn't pass that data vetting.
Yeah, I'm going to add to that, um just thinking about our recent process of vetting some tools, you know, just. One of their ways of trying to show that the data was useful for us is that it would validate well to our travel model, right? But like, anybody who does travel model, uh travel modeling knows that you can just hit the model over the head with a hammer to get it to. To match well to your observed data. That doesn't necessarily mean that like the core bits of the model they're using are actually useful or that it would. Apply appropriately when put into, you know, scenario testing, for instance. So, you know, that's, it's, it seems just a little opaque about that process. Like, we know in our field kind of how travel, traditional travel models work, like ABMs, four-step models. We know the science that goes into it. We know. All of the issues as well, um but when it's obscured behind behind passive data and algorithms that. People can't share for, it makes sense. They have these competitive products. Um when we can't see that, though, it's a little bit. It's just harder for us to trust, knowing that we've got a whole industry built around, kind of like checking each other's work and trying to build better tools.
Um. Okay, now, as a matter of fact, since we're um. And we've been talking about, you know, the data that the models that go into the models as as input, but also. I mean, on one hand, we've got automatically collected data that is offered by vendors, but then also we've got things like household travel surveys, right? Like the PSRC survey, which has been made public pretty consistency, uh pretty consistently. Is, let me ask you, um Bryson. So I've, I've understood that some, some agencies face more restrictions or challenges when it comes to publishing agency data. Or having that data then be posted by researchers to, let's say, third-party servers. And I understand there's a bit of a concern about, like, as a researcher, I'm using your data and then I want to make it public, and so I'm going to put it on some third-party research. Some third-party server that that might be an issue. Are you aware of these concerns? Uh is there some way that you have heard, for instance, P L T R C talk about how to address this?
Yeah, I think it's an interesting concept when you're talking about making your data totally replicable in science, and I think that's. That's like the goal that we should have as much as possible, with the exception of the fact that like we have really sensitive survey data information. And we are kind of responsible for being stewards of that in terms of, you know, exact location, demographic information that people trust us enough. To give us that data, so we have to be good stewards for our reputation, but also legally. So, right, we're we're held by these different standards that we have to make sure that we protect that data. But we want to make it available to researchers, so there's um, you know, agreements, like legal agreements that we have to. You know, come to terms with if people want to use that data. Um so if that data was going to be used later on, you know, to be posted somewhere else, that. It would have to be within our standards of what what can be published. So some things might be obscured, which would make reproducing it. A little harder, there'd be an additional step, or someone have to come back to us and ask for access to specific bits of the data, and we would hash out. What's available, how they can use it. Um so it's a little bit of a hurdle, but you know, it's. You know, that's the kind of standards that are set by state law and also just. Um you know, standards of what people expect when they are, you know. Giving us their data, that we're not just going to give it out to anybody, and then it's not just going to be given out to whoever wants it. There has to be a purpose for it, um and it's in a purpose that, you know, we we support and think that it's worthwhile to use, so. Um that's, that's one challenge. It's not insurmountable, but it's um, you know, it's, it makes it an additional kind of. Uh thing you have to think about.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. Um I. I've got a question for John Paul, but I think, let's see, I see, oh yes, Shank, Shankari, hi. I see you raised your hand.
Yes, um. Uh glad to see you again, Andre. Um but, yeah. I thought this would be the perfect time to talk about the T S D C. So the NREL hosts uh the Transportation Secure Data Center. Which is intended to solve exactly this problem. Um the tagline on the T S D C page says it is intended to relieve public agencies. Of the burden of responding to numerous data access requests. And it's been around for ten, almost fifteen years. The fifteenth year anniversary is coming up. So for those who are not familiar with the T S D C. The way that it works is that um public agencies can submit their um travel survey data. And then the non-spatial temporal data is available for people to download. If you want to work with the spatial temporal data, you you send your code to the data. So there is a secure VM that's set up at NREL with no network access. You can request certain software to be installed, and then you send your code up. Open source. Um and then it runs against the data and you get to take out the aggregate results. So that might be a. A balance, right, between addressing sort of the privacy concerns and making the data actually available for research. Is, you know, we'll, we'll take a look before you can do, we just won't give the data away. Um I just wanted to also highlight. That um for the NREL Open Path Data Collection Tool, um. We typically, so people who use it to collect data, there, it's uh free to public agencies and. Universities and so on. Um the MOU that you sign with us says that the data will be archived in the T S D C. And it's actually part of the consent statement that people agree to when they install the app. Um so we have the first few data sets there already. Um you can go take a look if you're interested. Um is, the first one is about one and a half years worth of data, so longitudinal, the same person, one and a half years. Uh from um. Uh e-bike pilot in Colorado. So, you know, again. It's not going to solve all of everybody's problems, but at least it's one step towards making. Data, if not fully open, at least open to the. In a balanced way between these competing um interests.
Hey, thank you very much. Excellent. All right, um. So yeah, very good pointer here to, and I think I I saw it mentioned somewhere in the chat as well. I don't know whether there was a. Link that was shared, but uh I'm not able to find it right now, but if you. If you want to share the the link in the chat again, please feel free to do that. Um so. Um so so John Paul, I have a question for you about, so, you know, in in our email exchange, you. And I, when I invited you to the panel, you talked a little bit about. What you, you said the the difference between doing open science and publishing open science, and I think you're kind of getting at. Uh you know, some of the barriers and incentive system that can keep us from being more open with our. Um. With our research. Um could you speak a little bit more to that about kind of the dimensions that you see here that impact. Transportation researchers when it comes to sharing things?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I'm I'm speaking, well, you know, again, I'll remind everyone, I'm speaking from the academic side here, right? We have, our our currency is is publications in academia, right? This is uh the metric that ever everyone is is measured against, so it's, it's like, you know, really critical for your. Career, but also, you know, your ability to continue to do your work, right? So all these things are really important. Um and many of the top journals are are not open, you know, they're not open access at least. Um or if they are open access, the fees are crazy, you know, ten thousand dollars or something for one paper to be made public. So it's. It's a little um. Uh there's, there's plenty of forces here that that push us to not send our our papers to. Let's say a a fully open access journal like PLOS One or something like that, right? Like, I would, I would love to just send everything there. Why not? Everything's fully open. Um but it's better if I publish in Nature or Science, right? Or, you know, try to go for this, these, these big-name journals. Um so those are the tensions we face. Um but I'll say, you know, there's still plenty of ways to get your work. Out there and open to the public. Um there's Research Gate, there's Archive, there's all these ways of putting pre-prints available and. Most journals accept that and are not going to come after you for violating copyright by by doing things like that. So it's sort of up to you to how far you want to go with making your content available. Personally, I put every single paper I publish on my personal website. You can just click on the link and download it and read it. Um I'm not sure if that's violating anything. Um maybe I should read more carefully, but. Um but I'm, I'm, I'm fairly sure it's okay to do that. There's some, there's some loopholes here. You can like email a paper to someone and not get in trouble. Um but um but it's on you to, you know, to to go that extra step, to say, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to work in this ecosystem that pushes me to send my. Papers to non-open, open access journals, but I'll still make my stuff as as openly available as possible. So that's kind of the. The needle you have to thread in academia, but um. I I do wish there were more pushes for open access across the board, especially from these top journals. Um and I would wish the review processes were a little more open. Um you know, this is, this is for everyone to go out in uh. And uh. I'll say, I see the comment here, my camera. Maybe I should be more careful. This is recorded, right? What am I saying? I'm going to get in trouble. About, you know, account, certain preprints are, may or may not be allowed. You can only post preprints. Yeah, so um, but it's up to us to to go out and look through what journals uh are going to be more and more more open or not. And there's a lot of variation in there, right? Even like the review processes, some journals will publish the whole reviews uh with the paper to show you what 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 the process was and the dialogue that went back and forth. I I prefer to try to send things to places like that, so you can see the conversations we had to the best extent possible. Um, and then, of course, on your own, you know, doing your own open science work. You know, I I I often, even let's say I'm working with um uh something where things are sensitive or proprietary. I can't make my entire, like, GitHub repo public. I'll I'll work in private mode the entire time, and then when we're allowed to make it public, I'll just make the entire repo open. So you can see the entire change history of everything, including comments and um, things like that from others. And and I think it's just important to be able to see how decisions were made um along the process of the work you're doing. So we try to, try to do that as best as we can. Of course, there's some learning curve to using those tools, but I think this is, this is just going to take time until that just becomes part of the standard education, that people learn to use GitHub and things as just tools of the trade, right?
Right, right, yeah, yeah. I am, I'm actually, so I'm curious, and this is a question of all our, all three of our panelists. You you spoke about, you spoke about proprietary code, and of course, I, I'm assuming that, you know, you're referring to code that you develop as part of research project, where you would want to keep it under wraps as long as the research project is ongoing, nothing is published yet. But I think like generally, when we talk about code, I don't know how this is for public agencies or consulting firms. Is there, for for all of you, have you had um challenges in balancing a desire to publish code openly versus dealing with concerns around proprietary code or or, let's say, the organization not wanting code to be published? And how have you dealt with that?
I could go first because it's probably an easy answer. There there's never been a concern with that. It's, you know, all the work that we do is for the public. So in terms of like developing code, um, I wish more of it could be open, you know, the downside of our model, all of it is open source. And we always push for the code, the core code of our E B M to be open source and available, even though very few people are going to go through and look at it. They should be able to use it and apply it. But we also have proprietary software we use for things like um assigning the trips, right? That pretty much, that's an industry standard that most N P Os or model users have some software to do this. That's you have to pay to use. So we can't just make it totally available to everyone. But as much as we can, yeah, we have our code up on GitHub, GitHub for, you know, sharing within the agency, but across other agencies as well. Um, and that's been super helpful. Um, and I don't see any downside to to doing that from our perspective.
So I've been in uh probably three different, three or four different ways of this. One, one N P O I'm working with right now, their GitHub repository is, I'm pretty sure it's open. It's Met Council of Minneapolis-St. Paul. And like you can go in right now if you wanted to and see the last thing I did um earlier today on the developer branch. Um, I've worked with some where they have private code repositories, but I think they would generally share if asked. Or, you know, give people, particularly within the industry, um, you know, access to it. In both of these cases, like Bryce mentioned, there's proprietary algorithm or proprietary software. Um, in both, most cases with me, it's Cube, um, you know, that does assignment and scimming. Now, the scripts to do that in terms of saying, hey, we're going to assign up to a thousand iterations at, you know, or until we get to a relative gap of ten to the negative sixth or whatever. Um, that's generally open if the rest of the repository is open. I've been working with a lot of Activity SIM projects lately and um, the one agency that falls under the where I think they would give just about anyone access, you know, at least within the industry. All of their Activity SIM configurations are an example in the Activity SIM um repos- repository. So it's not like it's totally inaccessible. And I think in general, that's the way a lot of places, you know, a lot of it N P Os and probably D O Ts like to go in one of those two directions, where it's either open that people can see it, or it's open at least to people within the industry, people that, you know, have some sort of need to see it. They may not want to make it entirely public. Really, I think a lot of those are really more for concerns about questions and just that taking up staff time, not so much that they want to be secretive. I have been in situations where I wanted to see model scripts or model files and was told no because of uh an agency restriction. And I, it it that honestly doesn't sit well with me. And there's implications of that, that, you know, follow those agencies that do that. And they're fortunately very, very, very few.
Interesting, okay. So let me ask the, I mean, we've, so we've talked a lot about data openness, we've talked about the use of proprietary data and and big data sets, but when it comes to actually just making, making all these components of our work uh uh public. I'm curious, for the three of you, um, I mean, so so what would you see as the kind of a key way that we could push more or or incentivize more openness among people who use our data or among people who do research and produce data, produce code? What what do you think would kind of be the key uh a key incentive mechanism that could help open things up a bit?
I'll start because I have the easy answer.
Oh, you have an easy answer. Okay, good.
If a client tells me to do it, it's, I mean, unless it's breaking a law. You know, we we will support our clients once it needs as much as possible, you know, just staying within the law, which generally has not been a problem. When I was back at the N P O, I tried to be as sharing as I could. I mean, obviously staying within the law and staying within ethics, you know, stuff that was coming from surveys was either summarized or not shared at all. But beyond that, it's, you know, we fix a lot of the same problems in this industry. And helping out each other is one of the best things we can do, just because, you know, it's it, we can, we can either figure out sixteen different ways to fix the problem, or we can, and, you know, every one of them have a flaw or two. Or we can figure out one or two great ways to do it with very few, if any noticeable flaws.
Yeah, just to kind of uh lead off that, um, I think one example of doing this well has been the Activity SIM Consortium, which I know a lot of folks on this call are familiar with and are deeply involved with it. But um, the idea of collaborating across agencies to kind of develop this tool that can be shared. And then also doing that in a way that supports the consulting groups that work with them. So there's a bench contract to take on different parts and support the system. It's not like, oh, we have this open model, we don't need consultant help anymore. Like, we definitely need consultant help to support those models, develop new features, do the model estimation in some cases, depending on what, you know, different agencies are doing. But that's been a really, you know, I'm not involved in the day-to-day, but from my understanding of it, I think it's been a success in keeping all the parties kind of happy and developing this this tool that will be kind of like a shared resource that's, you know, kind of leading, cutting-edge, I guess, tool or, you know, standards that we'll have. So, you know, collaborations like that, I think, are are one way of, of doing it. It's just one good example.
Interesting, okay, thank you. And um, and it it sounds like that collaboration also happens between consulting firms, even between privately uh private companies. Is that correct? I think I, I think I saw you nodding there, Andrew.
Yeah, there is a fair bit of collaboration. Um, like Bryce mentioned, there's a bench contract, um, R S G, Cambridge, and W S P are all on it. I'm, I'm not, I'm not involved with the day-to-day, you know, Activity SIM itself. I'm more on the implementation side, taking Activity SIM and making it work for various N P Os. But it's, it definitely makes me feel better having worked with some other activity-based platforms where they're essentially dead because it was a one consultant solution that, you know, somebody, people liked at one point. And then the world moved on and there wasn't that opportunity to maintain it and keep it running. And with the consultants now working together with Activity SIM and Activity SIM pushing, you know, the consortium pushing the direction, it it's easier to keep it as one solution that will work for a lot of people. And it will be maintained into the future. So it's not going to be like, you know, we're not going to get ten years from now and say, oh, Activity SIM grown. It's, it's still going to be a thriving platform for agencies to use.
Okay, thank you.
I'll add one thing from the academic world here, like what incentives can we do to get people to do this stuff? I mean, there are very few, and or at least I would say, whether you work openly or not, in academia, it doesn't really change anything about your personal, like, success in your career. So I I don't think there's a whole lot of alignment right there. So for one, you know, fi- finding ways to count things that are not just papers is is a, would be really helpful. And, you know, the 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 more senior people who are, you know, counting the things when you're going up for promotions, generally speaking, just look at at things like grants or or papers. But things like software downloads would be, I mean, uh, to me, some of some of those things are incredibly impactful, right? Some of the packages I rely on, written by other academics for free, are some of the most useful, impactful tools I've had in my whole career. And that person might get like one paper count or something for that, right? How do you measure that? It's it's, it's uh kind of hard. But um, taking that quite seriously, like your contributions to open science is never really talked about, or at least uh not 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 often talked about. Maybe there's a few places that that to talk about it, but it's certainly not something that is highly emphasized. So that has to change, like, I think institutionally for people to value that. And maybe, you know, like I said, on a one-off basis, there's some places, some departments that might support that more. But on the whole academia, I don't think uh values it as much as as, as as valuable as the the tools are to other people, right? The other is us also, our training, right? You know, we're professors, we're teaching people. And I train students to use open science as much as they can, right? Use open source tools, uh, open source languages. And um, the researchers that I'm training, my Ph D students, I try to do my best to to show them the value of of working in an open science ecosystem, um, so that wherever they go, they kind of bring that with them. And and that's, I think, how you kind of change the culture and norms around that. So it's going to take time, but I I think we're in a totally different world from where we were, I don't know, maybe decades ago, a couple decades ago, of of maybe valuing, starting to value some of the other contributions you do. And and some of that might also just be data, like making, collecting a giant data set and making that data set available. That's a contribution. It's not a paper, but it's it's its own value that a lot of people benefit from. So we don't have good ways of counting or me- me- you know, measuring those kinds of impacts, but I think they're pretty important. And to the extent that you can make those arguments on your promotional packages, I hope people value them. That's that's a, that's one big thing that would might help.
I I love the idea of the the giving more weight to things like software downloads or other people using software you created or, or even the data you created, right? Yeah, great. Um, I, let me pause here for a moment and see if there, um, are there any questions in the audience? Does anybody want to chime in or ask a question to our our panel?
Just want to say thank you for doing this, you guys. This is a great group. I'm so glad Jason's, you know, part of the B T R organizing committee, but also part of Zephyr and I A T B R. So he runs in a lot of these circles and and connects us really nicely.
Oh, thank you. All right, okay, um.
I mean, I maybe just kind of on the open science echo what J P says that, um, I think that there's, for example, our our co-open science committee member, Xu Songzhou, has made huge contributions to open science code and tools. Um, and I don't know that those are necessarily recognized in a, in an academic setting. Um, and, you know, we've had conversations about this on, you know, in choice modeling. A lot of modelers use Apollo and R, or they use Biogen and Python, and those are largely developed by academics in Europe. And so there's some questions about how those incentive structures might vary between countries, how that leads to the ability to do this sort of thing. So.
Or you can just wait until you're tenured and then you can work on software. I don't know.
Billy, do you have any insight on that?
Are you asking me? Oh, wait, what was that?
I know Billy, Billy Charlton, because he spoke about it, because Billy's in Europe, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
Have some insight on how um, I don't know whether he's there. Yep.
I'm here. Hello. Uh, can you restate the question? I got distracted by an email. I'm so sorry.
Uh, not a problem at all. I mean, you're you're also not, you know, probably weren't expecting to be, to be asked a question here.
It's ten P M here. What was the question?
Well, so so Jason just raised the question of, um, you know, like, open source software tools that are common, at least in in the choice modeling world. A lot of them are actually developed, maintained by, in Europe. So, uh, you know, thinking of Apollo or or also like this in my world, Biogen. And we were wondering whether the funding or incentive structures are somehow different in Europe versus uh in the U S context.
Right. Uh, I am actually not the right person to answer that question, uh, because I'm sort of straddling both worlds. Like, I I'm still very familiar with how funding happened in the United States. I can say that uh I I here in Europe, I keep running into people who are like-minded, uh, who think that the the open source methods and open source data and open source code um are important. But I find that in the United States too, I I'm not sure if there's like a funding structure in Europe that is somehow different. Um, I feel like there's been a sea change with the the available tooling for publishing things online, you know, with the the advent of sites like GitHub, um, and um paper sites like Archive.org. Uh, there's, there's this infrastructure now that's global, um, that allows people to share in ways that we just couldn't do, you know, in the nineties when I was a consultant for these consulting firms. So it's not just that the consulting firms were doing a bad job back then, it's just the tools didn't exist. But it wasn't really your question. If 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 someone else here in Europe knows the right answer to that, um, I would love to know it too.
Shankar, you you raised your hand.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to say, um, that as somebody with a more interdisciplinary perspective, right? So my, um, for those of you who are another way, my PhD is in computer science. But I work almost exclusively in the transportation domain in, you know, for uh for the software that I write. And so I've done a lot of interdisciplinary work, and I think one of the challenges, and this is my pet peeve, and I'm going to go off on it, is is that I feel like the training for transportation students is um, could be improved to really highlight um open source. You know, how to work in an open source setting and how to contribute, um, how to work on things that are not C plus plus code, you know, that does modeling on a N by N grid. And um, maybe another thing is to, to maybe um have the transportation domain in general, understand that software is like real work, right? It's not just like a little afterthought that you do, and, you know, it's cool. But but it's complex and it's hard, and there's a whole discipline of software engineering that people work on. And so, you know, no, you can't have like an undergraduate computer science student go and look at a, you know, really complex piece of software and make changes to it, because no, that is not going to work. So I I don't know that what the solution for this is, because I'm not an academic in transportation. But I just wanted to say that I feel like there's a, you know, maybe sometimes a little bit of a, how hard can it be thing? Um, and the answer is it can be really hard.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. So we're we're getting close to uh three, three central time. Uh, so first I'd like to Uh, so first, I'd like to thank everybody. I'd like to thank our panelists, uh, for taking the time to uh, join us today and to share your thoughts, and I, I thank everyone in the, um, uh, who's attended this and, and who's contributed to the conversation for the great, great contributions. So, yeah, thank, thank you all. I will take the last few, um, I'll take the last few minutes here, uh, to switch back to a shared or to, uh, sharing a PowerPoint. So I want to close out this session with the last few minutes to talk a little bit about what we've been doing at the Zephyr Foundation. So I mentioned at the beginning, when I induced the panel, uh, that we have been working on open science guidelines. So the Open Science Committee, right, that's me as the chair, uh, Jawad, who I think I saw in the audience, uh, then Jason and Simon Zhou from uh, ASU. So the four of us over the last about year and a half, we've been, uh, we've been working on this question of what, what is actually an open science contribution? And so the background here is, and we, we're talking about open science here, we're talking about data sharing and code sharing, uh, uh, and manuscript sharing, but it can actually mean a lot of things to many different people, and um, ultimately, kind of the devil is in the details, right? If I look at something specific and say, well, is this now an open science contribution or not? So when we started working as a committee, we said, you know, our first objective here should be to define if we want to start doing things like badging articles or giving out awards or determining eligibility of, of somebody's contribution, to define what actually constitutes an open science contribution. Like if I as a researcher, I produce something, I have a piece of research, I want to publish this, at what point could somebody say, yes, this is really open science that I'm engaging in? And so we developed a set of guidelines. And in developing those, we consider specifics of the travel demand research field, emerging challenges, we discuss things like, you know, we have a range of different research approaches, data collection methods, data types we work with, and oftentimes we have research that's covered by IRB protocols, right? And something that we discussed in the, uh, in, in the session today, increasingly, we tend to work with, or some of us work with proprietary data from third-party vendors, things like cell phone tracking and data or, or vehicle registration data. So basically, we, we sat down and said, well, okay, we've got to think about, if we want to promote open science practice, we have to get, be able to tell people, well, what is it that we want you to do? And so we developed this proposed set of open science guidelines, and this is a set of guidelines, it's a short document, it's a three-page document, that described what needs to be shared and how. And so we, we addressed the four, the three components here, the reporter manuscript, the code or materials, and the data. And so what I'm gonna do now is I'll walk you through and a set of slides that touching on these three items. And then at the end, I've got a link, and I'd love for everyone who's here to go and take a look. We're looking for feedback, so we would love your feedback on these guidelines. So first, let me talk about what we end up with, the other report, the manuscript is probably the easiest one, so to speak, where you say, okay, if, if you want to claim that you're being open with your science and the manuscript or the pre-print, it needs to be publicly accessible for free. And, uh, you know, as John Paul mentioned, there's there's probably a lot of wiggle room here, uh, as long as we're not, you know, straight up publishing something that is, that is really copyrighted, a pre-print or so is probably acceptable. But basically, that reporter manuscript that should contain all the relevant information for me to reproduce your research and to recreate the model if I'm a reader who has a travel behavior background in this case. And then regarding the, the, the code, we, um, you know, in our guidelines, we came to the, uh, uh, we settled on the final model code that needs to be publicly accessible, should have a DOI. If possible, we encourage the use of open source software, open source software or common commercial software. But if common software is used, then it needs to satisfy certain conditions. So it has to be readily translatable. The code needs to be readily translatable into some open source language. And if there are some black box functions, some statistical software does do that, documentation is provided. On top of that, the software environment has to be carefully documented and show up in a file, and the code needs to be shared in a well-defined directory structure. And then the third piece here is the open data. And so here we went back and forth a lot, because I know that in, uh, at least in our field, I just got back from a big, uh, uh, from ITBR, from Big Conference, that, you know, some people say, if you, if, if you want to claim that you're being open, you need to show, share the original raw data. Now, we iterated on this back and forth. We ended up saying, you know, we don't actually want to require that. We're gonna say, it is sufficient for us if you publish the dataset that was used to estimate or run the model, but that is public with the DOI, uh, to ensure that it's permanently accessible. And so just what has to be available then are all the variables that are relevant for the model. Now, if the raw data are not published, then the processing steps to get from the raw data to the final dataset, those need to be documented, some sort of pseudo-code or structured document that at least shows the steps, even if the raw data are not published. First identifying information needs to be removed or cleared by IRB. And then we created some additional guidelines, not gonna go into detail on that, for public agencies that discourage the uploading of data to third-party servers, or uh, for the case that there's really proprietary data that the vendor does not want to be published as such. Like the idea of sam- of a sample, by the way, we hadn't thought about that idea of asking a vendor just to publish a sample, but not the whole thing. Now, one thing that occurred, um, that's occurred to us in the discussions afterwards was, we talk about publishing code, but when it comes to research, especially in trial behavior, we work a lot with survey data. And so if we want to enable reproduction replication, reproducing the research, I don't necessarily need to know exactly what the survey instruments were, as long as I have the dataset and some documentation. So for reproduction with the same data, that's fine, but if we're talking about replication, so somebody taking, you know, my, my research and, and implementing that somewhere else, i.e. generating their own data or using different dataset, now the data collection instrument, the survey actually becomes critical. I need to be able to see that. And so currently, we're recommending, we're only recommending sharing the full survey questionnaires. We're actually considering moving that to become a requirement uh, in the eyes of, uh, uh, the Zephyr Foundation. So, next steps, I've given you a brief overview here of where we stand with these guidelines, and I'm out of time as well. So here is a link, uh, I'll, I'll, oops, I'll put that in the chat as well. Um, so this link, there you go. So this link will, um, um, will take you to, uh, a Qualtrics survey, actually. So we would value, we really would value your feedback and your input. If you go to that Qualtrics survey, the way it's structured is that these individual portions of the guidelines, they show up in the survey, and then there's a text box, provide feedback. That's basically to let you, um, provide feedback without making it all public with your name attached to it, but if you follow the link, so, um, at the top of the Qualtrics survey, there's also a link that'll take you to a Google Doc that contains the actual guidelines, and there you can also place comments or suggest edits. So either way, whatever you prefer, either in the Google Doc by editing or with the Qualtrics survey, we'd love to get your feedback on your reactions to this. Okay, um, and, thank you. Okay, this is great. Survey down. I'm excited to check that out, everybody. There's another link here that you might be interested in, in the, um, in the chat. So with that, I think we, um, we're out of time, so we'll have to wrap up here. All right, um, so.